Prior to the Board of Commissioners meeting is date May twenty five of two thousand and twenty-three. Pointed hour nine thirty AM. All right, we'll call the meeting order to the Salary Board. Roll call members present, please.
Commissioner Eichberger, Commissioner Pausch, I'm here, Commissioner De Filippo, Controller Whitcomb.
Here.
Okay, at this point, we have public opportunity or public comment opportunity for issues regarding salary board. Anybody? Okay, so we have the minutes in hand of our meeting of May eleventh.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
It's moved to seconded, all in favor to keep us say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have salary board actions.
I'll make a motion to approve all the salary board actions except for District Attorney's Office.
A second.
It's moved to seconded, all in favor to keep us say aye.
Aye.
I would make a motion for the District Attorney's Office. For, we have two positions. Hire someone an attorney to grade C forty-five, step four. And to hire a child abuse coordinator at C forty-two dash step fourteen.
I'll second.
Thanks, moved to seconded. For the questions, all in favor to keep us say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Right, is there any additional business to come before salary? Hearing none, I will call for motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Salary Board stands adjourned, we'll move into the Board of Commissioners meeting.
I ask you to stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, break out, so we call meeting to order, begin with the roll call, members present.
Commissioner Eichberger, Commissioner Pausch, I'm here, Commissioner De Filippo.
Okay, at this point, we have opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items. If there's anything, and I'll turn the rest of this over to.
Thank you, Commissioner Eichberger. The next section is the consent agenda, which includes routine items that do not appear to be controversial in nature and do not seem to require any additional discussion. They are Agenda Items four through thirteen. If anyone wishes to discuss or have any of these items discussed, a simple request would move that from the consent agenda. Hearing none, Commissioners, I ask for approval of the consent agenda.
We approve consent agenda, let's present.
A second.
Moved to seconded, all in favor to keep us say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the next section is the regular agenda, and we'll start with Agenda Item fourteen. I'll call in Carrie Think and Finder to discuss and seek approval of the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four fiscal budget. Hi Carrie.
Hi, good morning Commissioners. I'm requesting approval of the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal budget. Total budget revenue is sixty-three million, total expenses sixty-three point four million. Grants make up seventy-seven percent of the revenue and subsidy is seventeen point seven percent, other revenue is seven point three percent. Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions? Can we take action today?
Make a motion.
I have a question.
Okay.
Can you tell me the revenue and the expenses again, please?
Yeah, total revenue is sixty-three million and total expenses about sixty-three point four million.
Yeah, how are, what are we gonna do with that point four?
So, that, it depends on what fund that point four is coming out of. Some funds have fund balance. I'd have to look and see. Most of our funds are fully subsidized. So, for example, if, if there's a gap in the expense, the general fund will subsidize it unless there's a fund balance.
Okay.
So, for example, and it has been the hot topic, there's an extra subsidy in there for that, so their revenues and expenses are equal.
Because it certainly sounds like we have an unbalanced budget.
I, I believe we have several fiscal funds that have fund balance, so
Okay.
it, it's not an unbalanced. The general fund would be subsidizing anywhere that it needs to subsidize to keep those funds whole.
Thank you, that's, thanks, appreciate it.
Two of the funds are drug and alcohol and offender supervision have fund balance, so they're gonna be equal.
Okay, thanks, thank you. So, I will move then to approve the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four fiscal budget as discussed.
Moved to seconded, all in favor to keep us say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Carrie.
The next Agenda Item number fifteen, I'll call in Ryan Simon to discuss bid results and also to request to award the contract related to the bid results. Good morning, Ryan.
Thanks, good morning. So, the county issued requests for bids and one bid was made for us to purchase the Tara drug pouches, but the Tara pouches, they permanently and irreversibly deactivate prescription drugs so that they can then be put in the trash and can't be used by other persons. So, the one bid came in for twenty-four thousand nine hundred dollars and we're asking the Commissioners to act on that today.
Any questions for Ryan?
Yes, I'll make a motion to award the contract to Verity Environmental Technologies in the amount twenty-four thousand nine hundred dollars.
A second.
Okay, moved to seconded, there's no further questions, all in favor to keep us say aye.
Aye.
I'm now gonna turn over the next section of the agenda to our Deputy Chief Clerk, Angela Smizer. Contracts. Thank you, Stacy. All right, moving on to Agenda Item sixteen, I once again call on Ryan Simon to discuss the contract for drug and alcohol. Ryan?
Good morning, Commissioners. So, the Compass Mark contract, we're looking to increase that to forty thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Compass Mark provides student assistance training to individuals who work with our Student Assistance Program. They're primarily school staff and we're using prevention money that we received from the DDA to fund that contract.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Yeah.
I will move to approve the Compass Marking Contract for Drug and Alcohol in the amount of forty thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
A second.
Moved to seconded, all in favor to keep us say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Moving on, Agenda Item seventeen, I will call on Eric Radnovich to discuss the contract for the District Attorney's Office of ID. Eric?
Hi, good morning Commissioners. The contract before you is for Qualtrics Corporation. It's for fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. It is quality control software that we use in the laboratory for accreditation.
Any questions for Eric?
Move to approve the Qualtrics contract for District Attorney of ID in the amount of fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents.
A second.
Moved to seconded, all in favor to keep us say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Great. Next, I will call on Holly Sherman to discuss the contract for Human Resources. Holly?
Good morning. The contract is with Christian Baker Company. This is on behalf of the Coroner's Office. This is for professional liability insurance for Dr. Ross to perform autopsies. This is an annual policy renewal. The increase from the prior year call it policy to this year is five hundred and fifteen dollars. Any questions?
I will move to approve the Christian Baker Company RSUI Grouping Contract for Human Resources in the amount of eleven thousand eighty-five dollars.
Second.
Okay, moved to seconded, all in favor to keep us say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
All right, Agenda Item nineteen, I will call on Brent Durham to discuss the contract for Facilities Management. Brent?
Good morning, everyone. This contract is a lease agreement with Susquehanna Regional Transportation Authority. The agreement terminates the current lease in effect at our sixteen oh one Rittner Highway property and provides another leased area in close proximity at sixteen fifteen Rittner Highway. They will lease five hundred square feet of office space full-time and an additional one hundred thirty-three square feet of office space four days a week. The monthly sum for this space will be seven hundred seventy-five dollars. The term will be approximately two years until the transportation center being constructed at sixteen oh one Rittner is completed and ready for occupancy. The reason for this move is due to the rapid growth of the Bureau of Elections Department over the last three years. Since the beginning of two thousand and twenty, we've added four hundred fifteen of the XL Express voting machines. Then mail-in voting began, which really changed the dynamic of how an election is conducted, both with labor and space. You know, it now requires, you know, secured area to prep and process ballots to be mailed out, an area separate to sort and store. You know, they have scanners to count the paper ballots and then Act eighty-eight came along, you know, requiring space for canvassing on the day of election. You know, this requires space for the canvassers, the scanners, the watchers. And on top of that, the Election Department has all but doubled the amount of staff in this same timeframe. Adding to all of that, you know, we became ADA compliant at a hundred and eighteen polling places, which, you know, we have a hundred and twenty-five signposts and bases we store. We've got hundreds of cones, sandbags, et cetera. And then also COVID, we have, you know, plexiglass, skids of plexiglass and sanitizers and wipes that all get moved in and out of that building twice a year. By relocating Rabbit, it gives us the additional space needed to not only create more efficient space, but it'll be space with a much higher level of security. Be happy to answer any questions?
For actual, move to approve the Susquehanna Regional Transportation Authority contract for Facilities Management for eighteen thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty-seven.
My second.
Moved to seconded, all in favor to keep us say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Brent.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item twenty, I will call on Sue Carball to discuss the contracts for MHIDD. Sue?
Thank you. So, the first contract is a mental health contract for York County Transportation Authority doing businesses rabbit transit. It is amendment for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. It's an increase of thirty-four thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars due to additional authorized transportation services. Second contract is for Joanne Peters. She's one of our occupational therapists. It is an amendment for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and it's an increase of one thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars for additional occupational therapy services for the children. Is there any questions?
I will move to approve the contracts for MHIDD, the first being for mental health for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. This is with the York County Transportation Authority doing businesses rabbit transit. It's an addendum for a new contract amount of one hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars. And the second, second contract is with early intervention for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. This is with Joanne Peters. This is an addendum to that contract in new contract amount of six thousand, six thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Moved to seconded, all in favor to keep us say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Sue. Moving on to Agenda Item twenty-one, I will call on Bob Shyplee to discuss the contracts for public safety. Bob?
Morning Commissioners, I have two no-cost property lease agreements. The first one is with York County. It is a no-cost property use lease agreement for co-locating in the York County Shelter at Research Summit as part of the radio project. It will be an initial five-year lease with two automatic five-year renewals. The second, also part of the P twenty-five radio project, a no-cost property lease for a new tower site to be built at Messiah University. And the county will be assuming the utilities for the radio site once the tower and shelter is built and placed at the location. But it's no cost for the use of the land for the tower. If you're so inclined, if you would approve both of those, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the contracts for public safety as listed for York County and Messiah University.
A second.
Okay, moved to seconded, all in favor to keep us say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Right. Moving on, I will call on Justin Miller to discuss the grant application for recycling and waste. Justin?
Good morning. So, these are the standard forms for the household hazardous waste events that we send to DEP after the event is over. Actually, two forms here need your signature. One is the Record of Operations Report, which tells the EP the type of material we collected and the quantities. Overall, we took in thirty-two thousand five hundred and forty-five pounds of material dominated by paint. Once again, I think seventy-two percent of the weight was paint. We had three hundred and fifty-seven customers. The second form that needs your signature is the application for reimbursement. So, after punching in all the numbers, the total grant eligible costs of the event were twenty-eight thousand thirty-three dollars and fifty-six cents. We actually took in sixteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty cents in fees. That leaves a net cost of eleven thousand two ninety-four and thirty-six cents, which this is, that form is asking DEP to reimburse us that amount. Any questions?
Move to approve the PADP Household and Small Business Hazardous Waste Collection Grant Application of eleven thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars thirty-six cents for recycling and waste.
Second.
Okay, moved to seconded, all in favor to keep us say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Justin. I will now pass it back over to Stacy.
And I'm going to start by calling on Justin Miller again to discuss and request approval for a donation.
Yeah, so last week I received an email from Mike McIntyre. He's the General Manager of Cumberland County Landfill. Said he wanted to stop by and see me, which he did, and at that time, he presented me with a check for five thousand dollars from Cumberland County Landfill as a donation to the recycling and waste programs. Pleasantly surprised and seeking your permission to accept that donation.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the donation from Cumberland County Landfill in the amount of five thousand dollars.
A second.
Okay, moved to seconded, all in favor to keep us say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Justin. All right, that takes us then to Agenda Item twenty-four, which is Commissioner Liaison Reports, and I'll start by calling on Commissioner Eichberger.
Okay, since we're on the topic, Doug gave me a quick overview on items that I'll report on. Last week was the tire collection, first ever for the county. They collected just under fifteen tons of tires and let's say you're pleasantly surprised at the results. I'm not sure what the surprise is, but it's just the volume. Said we received a few calls since, asking if we're gonna continue it, so folks who missed it and aren't interested in redoing it. They're gonna work the financials and give us a report on that. I will say Kirk had mentioned to me yesterday that he thinks this could be, there could be a way forward in, in making this a permanent addition to our recycling efforts. Depending on what happens with our recycling facility, which brings me to the second point, which is the the analysis that HRG is doing for us regarding the current facility. And they've received the draft report as of Friday. Kirk and Justin and Brent are gonna put their heads together and review the report. Apparently, there's a lot of variables there and he didn't wanna go into a lot of detail, but they're, they're gonna be preparing some recommendations for us and bringing this forward to us shortly. So, those will, that'll be on our near-term agenda for discussion regarding recycling facilities and how we might improve that sustain it. So, that's everything on cycling. The only other item, of course, is our ongoing effort in regards to mental health funding and the MHIDD. And of course, last night was the fourth town hall meetings convene. I was unable to be there. Commissioner Pausch was there, I believe. Not able to. So, in addition, there were numerous community stakeholders reaching out to the legislators, according to Annie, regarding the need for adequate funding. We heard some of that at the Advisory Board meeting last week. It was quite the discussion in regards to outreach and how successful or at least how engaging that has been for our members. Got a lot of people motivated here and they're hopeful that it's gonna provide some, some positive input into the legislative process. Some of the feedback from a town hall meeting with Senator Rothman was not so promising, but it tells us we've got more to do. So, that is very much on the minds of the Advisory Board members, and they are not sitting back and waiting. They're very engaged in that advocacy. Also, this week, MH and law enforcement are providing CIT and Crisis Intervention Training in Lower Allen, and there's a graduation center tomorrow afternoon. Continues to be a bright spot in terms of active intervention, trying to address this, these issues at the community level. Last week, the MH office trained eighteen EMTs and medics from Penn State Lifeline in the suicide prevention topic, which has been an ongoing priority for us. And of course, yesterday, we were all present for Vega Johnston receiving the Dennis Marion Impact Award courtesy of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Very nice event, excellent opportunity to, to for us each to discuss with state officials the, the current funding situation I just alluded to, as well as to honor one of our true stars in county government, so. Just as from the update meeting from last week, more of the same really, provider staffing crisis continues to, to hamper our efforts, providers are having staffing deficits, continuing to have problems there, labor shortage and pay rates. So, Project Search, then on a good note, you're having search current classes in third rotation right now, the graduation is May thirty-first, and they've been interviewing individuals who apply for Project Search that will begin in September of this year. So, they've interviewed six individuals and they invited all six who applied to be part of the September twenty twenty-three class. Real success story, so proud of people for engaging in, so that's everything I have right there.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pausch?
Good morning, everyone. I would remind you to use the Cumberland County Library System. I was at the Mental Health Town Hall Meeting last night. Very promising, and this morning a constituent reached out to me. Representative Cutts not only responded to her with his support of mental, of increased mental health funding, but he also provided her with a copy of a letter that he wrote to appropriations requesting increased mental health funding. So, I think that's a very positive outcome. And I don't know if everyone here has seen Senator Rothman's email, but his last email talked about Senate Republican budget priorities, one of them being mental health and behavioral health services funding. So, I think that's a positive development also. Certainly, we are very, very hopeful for the budget, and I can't remember the name of that, the number of the House bill. I just saw this yesterday. But a House bill either is being introduced or, or has been introduced that would legislate one hundred million dollars of increased mental health funding this year. And that bill breaks it down into not only county-based funding dollars, but money for workforce developments for that particular subject. And boy, the other two, I can't remember. I wish I had that in front of me, but I don't, I'm sorry. And that's, that's all that I have. My, my liaison, they didn't, we didn't meet, so I had a light week or two.
Commissioner De Filippo?
I'll make up for that. The Property Investment Board met on May eleventh. This group has been pretty active. Forty-four West Main Street, New Kingston was granted a sixty-eight extension. A contractor started to make renovations this month. One with Three Locust Lane, again Silver Spring Township, like termination approved. One oh two Beard Road, again Silver Spring Township, priorities at shape posted as condemned. Sixty-six twenty-five Wordsville Road, Hampton Township. Darce improvements being done, though not very quickly. Even an eye on this one for next month. Fifty-four twenty-five Wordsville Road also Hampton Township has been posted as condemned. It's going to be township and county planning commissions for review. Four nineteen, four twenty-one Third Street in New Cumberland, white process was approved and eight thirty, the red carpet over Midland Township demo permit was approved. The Housing Redevelopment Authority met on May eighteenth. There are thirteen new, we leased thirteen new units for Section Eight housing, but eleven were terminated. Two West Penn, we have efficiency units now available for occupancy. Walk-throughs are done with potential clients or tenants, so they can see the unit prior to saying yes. But this can only happen one time per potential tenant, they can only pass. More to action. Housing redevelopment, more took action, insurance policy renewals for automobile, general liability and property. They also ratified new operation agreements between Perry County Commissioners and Housing Authority of Cumberland. And also ratified administrative agreement between the Housing Authority of Cumberland County and the Redevelopment Authority. Aging Advisory Board met on the nineteenth. Food banks and pantries are ready to go and are able to, and folks are able to apply for a grant to help funding. Also restarting the low-income water assistance program. We can now give up to five thousand dollars per household for water assistance. Senator Jean Yaw is trying to legalize slot machines. The revenue doesn't come to aging, though, like lottery does. So, the PA says Association of Area Agencies on aging is trying to encourage them to include aging in their funding. Annie Hough is also starting to work on the next four-year plan. Annie is also connected with House Rep Patty Kim. She will be coming to the Department of Aging for a visit in the next few months. As we approved today, other new board members, Stephanie Lai Schlaftman, Lynn Wright Flo Hummel and Ron O'Neil Junior. Conservation District met on May twenty-eighth, just to verify the recent Byrathon winners. First place went to the team known as Big Mouth Bass, Cumberland Valley. Second place was awarded to the Tree Hug and Pine Martin, was also from Cumberland Valley. And third was Global Warmers from Carlisle. Several applications have been received for the Conservation District College Trade School Scholarships. Ranking criteria for the Ag Conservation Assistance Program, also known as ACAP, is being reviewed and possibly revised. This is one of the programs that landowners use to get assistance for BMP purposes. And lastly, the PA State Conservation Commission allocated for dirt gravel and low-volume room programs for Cumberland County in the amount of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars for this year, similar to last year. And that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
I'm, I would like to report that an exec, executive session was held on May eighteen twenty-three at nine thirty AM regarding personnel. And I'll ask if there is any other business to come before the board today.
Just a question. Where is it? The Painting Board, or do we have to approve those minutes at this meeting?
You should, you don't have to do it this meeting.
I should approve. At some point, yeah.
Oh, because they're in the packet, but they weren't on the agenda.
Right.
It's a good question. It was part, it was, I think it was the first part of your last Salary Board and Board of Commissioners meeting. You did approve the minutes of May eleven, two thousand and twenty-three. I would consider that approval of the Katic minutes as well, but I think going I would consider that approval of the Katic minutes as well, but I think going forward, we should probably segregate those from. Each member's.
Separate agenda?
No, not separate agenda, they can.
Thank you, that was.
And I did have a question about that. I think Ken's first name is spelled incorrectly, is it two N's?
Okay. We'll fix that before we.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure, yeah, yeah.
That's all I had, basically.
Thank you, commissioner. No other business, uh, hearing none, seeing none, we are adjourned.